I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, for that beautiful invocation. Wonderful way to begin this beautiful Thursday. Council members, we have an agenda before us today. There is a request to add one item, which is our council member swearing in by the Honorable Pamela A.M. Campbell. I'll entertain a motion for approval with that change.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Seeing that there's no request for discussion, will the clerk please open the machine for voting? Council members, please enter your votes. Seeing that all council members have voted, will the clerk please tally and announce the votes?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, the motion to approve the agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. Council members, we have a consent agenda before us today.
Move approval.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on the consent agenda?
No ma'am, we do not.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Seeing that there's no request for discussion, will the clerk please open the machine for voting? Council members, please enter your votes. Seeing that all council members have voted, will the clerk please tally and announce the votes?
Madam Chair, the motion to approve the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. And before we move on, I will mention that I am very pleased about the passing of item CB6, which is funding for neighborly to provide Meals on Wheels services. This is something that year after year, we are proud to support the good work that Meals on Wheels provides for our seniors in our community. For our next item on the agenda, we have the swearing in of council member John Mohammed Malone by the Honorable Pamela A.M. Campbell.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you all for coming here with you this morning. All right, so would you please raise your right hand? I... I, John Mohammed Malone...
I, John Mohammed Malone.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the city of St. Petersburg.
That I am a citizen of the city of St. Petersburg.
State of Florida.
State of Florida.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
That as an officer of the city of St. Petersburg...
That as an officer of the city of St. Petersburg...
And a recipient of public funds.
And as a recipient of public funds.
I will support, protect, and defend.
I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Charter of the City.
Under the Charter of the City.
And the Constitution of the State.
And the Constitution of the State.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of the city council member.
Of the office of the city council member.
District 7.
District 7.
Of the city of St. Petersburg, Florida.
Of the city of St. Petersburg, Florida.
On which I am now about to enter.
Of which I'm now about to enter.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Well, do it three times. It is good.
Mingle this.
There you go. Two. Three. The third one underneath there, if you could hit it. There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And we will go to open forum. Mr. Clerk, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak this morning?
Madam Chair, we're going to have Mr. Tracy read the rules.
Thank you.
If you wish to address City Council on subjects other than public hearing or quasi judicial items listed on the agenda, please sign up with the clerk. Only the individual wishing to speak may sign the open forum sheet. Only city residents, owners of property, business owners in the city, or their employees may speak. All issues discussed under open forum must be limited to issues related to the city of St. Petersburg government. If you are speaking to an item on the agenda, you may speak only, you may only speak once during the open forum or when the item comes up on the agenda. In order to provide an opportunity for all citizens to address council, each individual will be given three minutes to speak and after which the microphone will be muted. If you wish to address City Council through the Zoom meeting, you must use the raise hand feature in the Zoom app or enter star nine on your phone at the time the agenda item is addressed. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and asked to state your name and address. At the conclusion of your comments or when you reach the three minute time limit, you will be muted. All raised hands will be lowered after each agenda item. Regardless of the method of participation used, normal rules apply, including the three minute time limit on comments, the requirement that any presentation materials be submitted in advance of the meeting, and the rules of decorum. If live public comment is disrupted by violations of the rules of decorum, the chair is authorized to accept public comment by alternate means, including by email only. And we do have six speakers. I'm going to call the first two names. Please find an empty podium and state your name and address for the record. Kevin Kavanaugh and Wanda Goodridge.
Do you want me to?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I have lived in the St. Petersburg area for 30 years, and I've played pickleball for one year, and before pickleball, I played tennis for 25 years. I recently accepted the position of president of the St. Petersburg Pickleball Association. Our primary goal is to actively work alongside the mayor, council, and Parks and Recreation Department to formulate a St. Petersburg-wide pickleball master plan, which would continue the infrastructure development at a scale that has commenced with the exponentially growing number of pickleball players in St. Petersburg. Pickleball has now attained the title of the fastest-growing U.S. sport. Since 2020, the number of individual pickleball participants has exploded by over 35% to in excess of 5 million active players today, with projections of 40 million players within a decade. As a proactive model of managing the significant growth, the city of Tampa prior to 2021 had only nine outdoor pickleball courts, then 23 courts by the end of 2021. Earlier this month, the city announced a commitment for an additional 26 outdoor courts to be completed prior to the end of 2023. This will bring the city of Tampa total to 49 outdoor pickleball courts. Tampa has developed a master plan for pickleball to keep up with the same exponential growth that we have continued to experience here in St. Petersburg by expanding from nine to 49 pickleball courts in three short years. Manatee County recently constructed a pickleplex facility, which consists of a total of 20 pickleball courts, of which 14 are actually covered by tall industrial roofs, which have giant fans overhead. Most of my fellow pickleball enthusiasts have made numerous trips from St. Petersburg to play on these courts to avoid the high level of congestion at the St. Petersburg pickleball courts. This type of facility would be spectacular, popular in St. Pete, not just for the regular play by our residents, but also utilized for hosting local, regional, and national tournaments, which would draw thousands of pickleball players every year from all over North America to our great city. The city of St. Petersburg currently has only 25 pickleball courts for the entire city. This consists of six courts at Crescent, Coquina, and JWK, four at Walter Fuller, two at Fossil Park, and one at Booker Creek. There's an active plan to convert two tennis courts at Bartley Park into eight pickleball courts in the coming months, but that is only 33 total pickleball courts. The courts, especially at Crescent Lake, receive an extraordinary amount of play all week long. It is common to have more people waiting to play than actually playing at peak hours. In closing, the primary goal of the St. Pete Pickleball Association is to share our group's St. Petersburg-focused pickleball experience, which is approaching 3,000 contacts within our network, and to support the mayor, council, and the Parks and Recreation Department to develop a city of St. Pete.
Thank you.
There we go.
Morning.
Good morning. My name is Wanda Goodridge, and I'm here to share just a couple of minutes about my personal experience with pickleball. I, unlike him, I've been playing for eight years, right here in Pinellas County. I can't say St. Pete, because my initial five years was journeyed to Largo, Clearwater, although I live at the very, very south of South St. Pete. My commute was often, my play was often accompanied by hour-and-a-half to two-hour commute. Very disheartening when I live in this beautiful city of St. Pete, had no facilities that I could play with, play on. I too transformed from tennis and never had that experience when I was growing up or a young adult before my older, more mature, more mature adulthood, never had a problem. You knew the busy courts, you knew the busy times, but you can always find a pickleball court. I too, like he said, traveled to Bradenton five days a week to play pickleball. I can't get a court here in St. Pete. I can't get a group of my equally skilled level players, because I've been playing eight years, not one. I've been playing eight years, not the one or two since COVID, since the big hoopla since COVID. And it's important for them to have equally skilled level players as it is for myself. So I have to go and find that, because I can't get a court here in St. Pete, in my own city where my tax dollars go, I have to spend an hour-and-a-half commute and pay to go play, because I'm not a resident of that county. So I just employ the committee to take a look at this new, as he said, fastest-growing sport, and I'm sure, unlike two years ago, I probably could have said to most of you all about pickleball, and you would say, what is that? If we had a T-shirt and a saying, we would go, and people would say, what in the blink is pickleball? So now I would challenge anybody not to know what pickleball is, because it's all on the news, it's in commercials, you got your athletes joining in now, purchasing professional teams, that is only going to hype the sport even more and make the facilities less available if we don't keep up with the trend. I appreciate you listening, thank you.
Dr. Ed Carlson and Manuel Sykes.
Morning, council. I'm Dr. Ed Carlson, USA Pickleball Ambassador, 7691 30th Avenue North. At age 14, I started playing tennis at the tennis center in South St. Petersburg. 2010, I got pickleball started in the city of St. Petersburg, then first two outdoor courts in 2013. Finally, three years ago, I gave up my tennis rackets. Finally, our goal is to blend tennis and pickleball to be symbiotic and good for all. Houston, St. Petersburg, we have a crowding problem. We pass around a picture, please, Chan, showing the photo of Coquina Key Courts Monday this week. 24 players on six courts, 32 paddles in the racks, and paddles stuck in the fence lining up, over 60 players, and two empty tennis courts beside them. St. Petersburg has 60 tennis courts. This data-driven reality is essential. I'll give you two examples. From the city website, city leagues in the summer, which I sent all of you, one each kickball and basketball, two flag football, 10 softball, and 12 pickleball leagues, zero tennis leagues. And there were 110 teams in the heat of the summer with three to four players each team. That's 330 to 440 players in the summer leagues. So we're the dominant sport in the city of St. Petersburg now. Two, the city looked at Azalea Walter Fuller tennis courts only for a week, one court in use half the times about. Pickleball players then did, from four major areas, did a 12-day count of data-driven reality. Results were sent to you all, 794 pickleball players and 46 tennis players, 17 times as many pickleball players, and it's a booming sport. For further data, we urge you to do a week's study of hourly use of each court on a spreadsheet at each of the four major play locations, or ask St. Pete Pickleball Association to do it. Urgent emergency response as the snowbirds flock to St. Petersburg is dual-use lines on often empty tennis courts at three most crowded locations only. Two pickleball court lines on each of two tennis courts each location to prove how well this works and relieve the immediate crowding crisis. Please, we will bring our own nets. Please be responsive and responsible to the thousands of citizens in St. Petersburg who play pickleball. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Manuel Sykes, and I'm not here about pickleballers. Unfortunately, no, no offense to pickleballers. I'm here to congratulate councilperson John Muhammad and... Oh, yes, Manuel Sykes, 1408 22nd Ave., South St. Petersburg, Florida. But again, I rose to just congratulate councilperson John Muhammad and the council for listening, listening to our community and who it supported for this position. I was sitting here thinking about, you know, I've been around a minute, I won't say my age, but I can remember a time when a council would not look like this. There would not have been this kind of diversity, there would not have been females, there would not have been Muslims, there would not have been LGBTQ. You have a diversity that is historic, and John is just another addition to that diversity. And my hope is that you all would be intentional in working together. As Frank Peterson said, this is one community, and I truly believe that it's in your hands and hopefully in your hearts to do what is necessary to bring all of the community up, just as our downtown area is rising as fast as Jesus from the grave. I hope and I pray that you all will let your diversity be a strength and that you all will be a model. Our country now is so divisive, there's just this prevailing and pervasive disunity, and I pray that it will not happen here. There's too much to be gained and too much also to be lost. And so I want to say, John, thank you for your work that prior to this time has qualified you and made you a favorite among our community members. And hopefully, all of you will get to know John, and you all will work together, because this community, imagine yourselves and the power you have, that over the 200,000 people in St. Petersburg, you along with the mayor, control their destiny. And I hope you all will take that very seriously and remember our community, that most of the time, we're not a part of the, the progress. And this is a, this is a time to catch that up and to be fair and equitable to everybody. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Wilford Brazan and Carrie Mueller, please go to an open podium. When it's your turn, please state your name and address for the record. You all have three minutes to address City Council.
Good evening, everybody. Wilford Brazan, 3301 58th Avenue, South, St. Petersburg, Florida. I was about to walk out when I heard softball and tennis, I was like, oh, wrong, wrong meeting. But I'm glad he spoke up, because I was, I was like, okay, I'm good. I want to say congratulations to Brother John Muhammad. He is a brand-new day, you know, it's a good feeling, and it's, it's, I know Brother John Muhammad, because when I was younger, years ago, he always, you know, say, hey, Will, you know, I got your back, don't give up, you know, because, you know, I used to plan a lot of events, and he made donations, and he was there, he supported, you know. So to see somebody that's actually a part of City Council that used to believe in you, I have belief in City Council, because a lot of people think, you know, some crookedism going on, but when you have somebody that's a part of City Council, that's, that's doing great works, you can say, hey, I believe in them. Because a lot of people, you know, young people say, it's screwed, it's corrupted, it's no corruption, because somebody that believed in me, that helped me out, that made me a better person in my community, they're part of City Council now. So, and I just want to say thank you to the rest of the City Council for putting somebody that, that has a great impact on our community in this place, in this position. And one last thing is, as a young man, you know, I try to do the best I can, and Mr. Muhammad, he always had my back, and I want to congratulate him for being a great man, even when before. Thank you for being great, thank you for doing a lot for our city even before this opposition, and congratulations to all of you. Thank you, God bless.
Morning. Hi, my name is Carrie Mueller. I live at 1125 James Avenue in the Campbell Park neighborhood, and I just wanted to say congratulations to Brother John Muhammad, and I think this is a great opportunity to work as a diverse City Councilperson to represent our city. And I just have been living in Campbell Park for about a year at this point, and we're trying to work together with our different neighborhoods between Campbell Park and Child's Park, 13th Street Heights, and Melrose Mercy, to find out what kind of priorities we have that we can put our resources together to really see some, you know, improvements made to our neighborhood. And so I just think this is a great opportunity to represent our community in a really diverse way, and I'm looking forward to having the City Council represent us. Our goal in our neighborhood has been to try to get some of the newer residents that are moving into the neighborhood to meet some of the residents who have been living there for a very long time, and we can try to be stronger as homeowners and residents together. Just last Saturday, we had our monthly trash cleanup, and we had a new homeowner who just moved into the neighborhood, and I was able to, as we walked down the street, introduce him to multiple homeowners who have been there for decades, and that way, we can get to know some of the people that already live there, and we can move forward as a community as a whole. So I just wanted to say, I think that it's going to be a great opportunity for us to really have a diverse city and diverse representation, and I think it's going to be a great opportunity. So I just want to say congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speakers.
All right. Thank you. And before we go to our next item, since we had someone from Campbell Park just address us, I want to congratulate the Campbell Park Neighborhood Association, who recently received a high honor, which was the Keep Florida Beautiful 2022 Clean Community Award. And so thank you, Ms. Mueller, for the work that you did to earn that award for the neighborhood, and we are extremely proud that across the state of Florida, your neighborhood was selected for that honor. We'll go now to awards and presentations. We have one proclamation today on... We'll go now to awards and presentations. We have one proclamation today on Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and that will be presented by Councilmember Gertis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, colleagues. I don't think the mayor knows what he got himself into when he asked me to do this without a time limit. But I appreciate the honor of being here. I'm also joined by a couple of members from Healthy St. Pete, Kim, Megan, Dr. Cho. Thank you for being here. I also asked a couple of breast cancer survivors to join us this morning. We have three that I know of, and if there are any more in here that I, that I don't know about, I apologize. But in attendance is my wife, Cecily Gertis, Tara Schaefer, and Susan McGrath. Quickly, I know this council, but publicly, I can't tell you how much this month means to me personally, to my family, which is large, thanks to the Gertis and Valentes. You know, two years ago, on October eighth, our lives changed very drastically. We just celebrated, well, my wife celebrated. She went to Charleston with her friends. I was at home with the kids. But just celebrated that date of her diagnosis, October eighth, twenty twenty. And when you have a three-year-old and a one-year-old at home, life changes very dramatically on a day like that. And all I can do is give the gratitude to my wife, who is an amazing sister, daughter, wife, mother, friend, who kept going to work, kept being a mom, kept being a sister. When her sisters needed something, she was the first phone call. She always is. And it's an amazing thing to see, two years later, us on the other side of this because of the work that Dr. Cho and Healthy St. Pete and all of the, across the country, all of the technology and medicine that has changed over the last ten years. Because let me tell you, when you're in a meeting with a doctor and they tell you, just be glad that this was not ten years ago, because this would have been a very different story, that will, that'll change your mindset really quickly. And so I'm very thankful to Healthy St. Pete and, and all of our medical providers that continue to try to find a cure to this disease. Real quickly, I just wanted to mention also Tara and Susan, who are here. Tara, also, she was diagnosed a few months after. She's a very close friend of our family. Diagnosed a few months after, my wife continued to go to work, continued to be a mom of three, an amazing wife, and then opened a nonprofit, an app that she's currently working on. And Tara, if I'm screwing something up, you can yell at me later, that connects survivors and families of survivors with each other so they can continue to communicate. Because let me tell you, having gone through that, that was the backbone of how my wife got through it. It certainly wasn't me. I'm sure she wanted to kick me most days, but being able to connect those people in a way. So she continued to do that. Susan, I think most of you know Susan McGrath, continued to be an activist, continues to be an activist in our community through her diagnosis. And so the women that go through this are simply and utterly, and I apologize for the word, but there's no other word. They're just badasses. And, and I'm so proud to be married to one, and I'm very privileged to give this proclamation. And if, and if Healthy St. Pete, Dr. Cho, and Seth, Tara, and Susan, if you'd join me up here, please, I would, I would be honored. Whereas breast cancer touches so many lives in Pinellas, from our loved ones and friends to our neighbors and coworkers who have survived or lost their lives to breast cancer. And whereas considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, yet it remains the most frequently diagnosed type of non-skin cancer and the second-leading cause of cancer deaths among women in Pinellas County. And whereas, thanks to earlier detection and better treatments, mortality rates for breast cancer have decreased in the last decade. Knowing that, knowing what may contribute to breast cancer, symptoms, diagnosis, and treatment are important in the case of prevention. And whereas, having affordable access to screenings and early detection for all women is an essential component in the fight against breast cancer. And whereas, the state of Florida recognized the need to provide uninsured, low-income women ages fifty to sixty-four with access to life-saving cancer screenings such as mammography and cervical cancer screenings through its Breast and Cervical Cancer Program, BCCP. And whereas, the Florida Department of Health and Pinellas County's BCCP completed one thousand and thirty life-saving screenings in two thousand and twenty-one and was recognized as one of the state's top programs. And whereas, during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in October, we stand with our mothers, with our daughters, with our grandmothers and friends, in supporting their struggles after a breast cancer diagnosis, as well as recognizing the doctors, nurses, and other health professionals whose care and hard work gives hope to those living with breast cancer. Now therefore, I, Koble Gertis, on behalf of Kenneth T. Welch, the mayor of St. Petersburg, Florida, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-two as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and urge residents to join in activities that will increase awareness of what Americans can do to prevent and control breast cancer and pay tribute to those who have lost their lives to this disease. We also recognize October as Florida Department of Health and Pinellas County Breast and Cervical Cancer Program Month. Thank you. Dr. Cho, would you like to share any, share any words? Sorry, I went quick there.
And Councilman, thank you for sharing that powerful story. And I think it impacts and it touches people really across the board, because it is common. It's the most common type of cancer in women. One in eight women in the U.S. will be diagnosed with breast cancer, unfortunately. That is, and October, as some of you may know, is Breast Care, Cancer Awareness Month. And that's, that's why it's important to really get that word out. That screening is important. That early detection does save lives. I'm really proud of the program, the Department of Health, to meet the need and the gap, providing over a thousand screenings to fifty, sixty-four-year-old women without insurance. And I am appreciative of the city council here today to, to recognize this, give this proclamation, highlighting the importance of cancer screening and as well as the work of our hard-working Department of Health staff. Okay, I'd like to invite our program manager for BCC program, Valerie Lee, to say a few words. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Cho, and thank you for the city of St. Petersburg. Every day, we try to make a difference to the lives of the women that we serve here in Pinellas County. Breast and cervical has been in Pinellas County for thirty years, and we're funded by the CDC. And we're so grateful to have the opportunity to screen, listen, because early detection is the key to make sure our women know that there is help for our undeserved and uninsured women here in Pinellas County. It is not easy, but the work is worth it at the end of the day. Thank you so much.
Chair, if it's okay, I'd invite Susan, Tara, Cecily to say a few words, if that'd be all right. You don't have to, but...
I mean, I'll say a couple of comments. I'm, I'm very grateful for the council member, the mayor, the council and the city to bring some attention to breast cancer. I had my diagnosis a year ago this month. I missed my mammogram the year before, and I thought I was fine, because I don't have anybody in my family who has breast cancer. And I believed that common misconception that we're mostly okay if you don't have anyone in your family. And I was a little bit cocky. On October first, I went for my mammogram, and I did a Facebook post. I said, "Celebrating the first day of Breast Cancer Awareness Month by getting my mammogram." And you know what? I had breast cancer. And so I went through surgery and chemo, which was harder than I thought. All of those men and women, because men can get breast cancer too, you know, who go through that and radiation. I have a, we were just speaking before this, such respect for the warriors that do this and all cancer, really. But eighty-five percent of the people who have breast cancer have no family history. So the more we can talk about it, I try to do that with my friends and my colleagues and people I come across. But everybody, the more we can get that message out, it's just like Dr. Cho said, it saves lives. So thank you for the city for leading on this. Thank you, Councilmember Gertis. It's, you're, you're doing a very positive thing, and I'm grateful from my heart.
My wife definitely wasn't going to talk. I tried to get, I tried to get her up here. But thank you very much, Chair. Chair, would you like to take a picture? Thank you. You want to do everybody? You want, okay.
We're all dressed up over here.
Thank you, Councilmember Gertis. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
It's like over and done.
Some members will now begin our public hearings for the day. We have two items in public hearings. Items E one and E two, our preliminary assessments. And we have Mr. Joe Wa with us today to present these items. Good morning.
I'm of approval of E one and E two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve items E one and E two. Do we have any requests for comment?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. And seeing that there is no request for discussion, we have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please open the machine for voting? Councilmembers, please enter your votes. Seeing that all present councilmembers have voted, will the clerk please tally and announce the votes?
Madam Chair, the motion to approve within items E one and E two passes unanimously with Councilmember Fix Sanders being absent.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wa. We'll close public hearings and go to our legal item for today, item J one. Mr. McCollum, good morning.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, new councilmember. I'm sorry. Good morning. All right. Cam McCollum for, from the City Legal Department. I'm here today on a settlement. This is a workers' compensation washout settlement. I'll just tell you briefly about it. The employee was named Jamarcus Smith. He was in the sanitation department. There were three separate dates of loss. Our outside counsel has resolved this matter pending council approval. It's a washout settlement. So all future benefits and indemnity fees will be taken care of. The total amount is sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars just by way of brief background. He's a thirty-seven-year-old man, was injured, like I said, three different times. We were dealing with a number of different lower back injuries. And the futures going forward in this on a permanent total disability will go into the seven figures. And so we feel this is a good settlement that has been obtained by our outside counsel.
We, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve item J one. Do we have any requests for comment? Thank you. Seeing that there's no request for discussion, will the clerk please open the machine for voting? Councilmembers, please enter your votes. Seeing that all present councilmembers have voted, will the clerk please tally and announce the votes?
Madam Chair, the motion to approve within item J one passes unanimously with Councilmember Fix Sanders being absent.
Thank you. Now we'll go to reports, and we will begin with item E two, our resolution regarding the installation of a plaque within the municipal pier district. Good morning, Mr. Ballestra.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of council. Thank you for your time today on this very important subject. We're here to share the story of the HMS Bounty, its relationship with the city of St. Petersburg. There's a, not a PowerPoint, but there's a couple of images just for reference. That is the actual bounty up on the screen right now. I'm going to turn the mic over to a couple of speakers to share some quick stories, including our director of the museum, St. Petersburg Museum of History, Ruiz Farias, as well as Claudia McCann, who is the wife of the late Captain Robin Walbridge. On October twenty-ninth, twenty-twelve, the bounty sank off the outer banks of North Carolina during Hurricane Sandy. And both Captain Robin Walbridge, as well as deckhand Claudine Christian, were lost that day. And so I, I am here today to both share the story and advise that there will be a recognition ceremony at the origination point of its original location at the pier. I'll show a map of that later on October twenty-ninth at ten a.m. But today, Ruiz will speak to the history, and Claudine can provide, Claudia can provide background as well. It is the administration's intention with council's approval to install a marker reflecting this relationship with the bounty. And I'll conclude with the business item after we get just a brief take on the history. If, Ruiz?
Good morning. As a young boy growing up in downtown St. Petersburg, one of my fondest memories was always Saturday mornings, hopping on the bike that I purchased at Web City from the money I saved selling Evening Independent in front of the Open Air Post Office. That's going to show you a little bit of my age here, and riding down to the waterfront. My first stop, of course, was the Museum of History, right? I had to stop there. But the day wouldn't have been complete without walking up the gangplank and stepping on to the bounty. There, you know, we would roam upper and lower decks and pretend that we were either pirates or sailors on the bounty. And, you know, our imaginations would carry us on the seas aboard that magnificent ship. It's an enduring piece of our maritime history, and we're very lucky that the bounty decided to call St. Petersburg home. And people often wonder how that even happened, how that ship arrived in St. Petersburg. The bounty was built in nineteen sixty. She was in a large reproduction of the original seventeen eighty-seven Royal Navy sailing ship, the HMS Bounty. She was commissioned by MGM Studios for the nineteen sixty-two film Mutiny on the Bounty. She was the first large vessel built from scratch to use in a film using historical sources. The bounty was built to the original ship's drawings from files from the British Admiralty Archives and in a traditional manner at the Smith and Ruland Shipyard in Nova Scotia. Her beam and her waterline length were increased, increased to assist in the filmmaking to actually carry the production staff from the film equipment. She launched on August twenty-seventh, nineteen sixty, and was crewed by a number of young sailors out of Nova Scotia and fishermen from Nova Scotia. The vessel sailed via the Panama Canal to Tahiti for filming of the film. The script of the Mutiny on the Bounty called for the ship to be burned at the end of the film, just like the original HMS Bounty. But the star of the film, actor Marlon Brando protested and actually threatened to walk off the set if MGM was actually going to burn the ship. So they kept the vessel on service. The film ironically pretty much bombed at the box office and nearly bankrupt MGM, actually. After the movie was filmed, the ship sailed on a worldwide promotional tour, including a stop at the nineteen sixty-four World's Fair in New York. And that is where it was when the city council met with the management group of the ship and talked them into bringing it to St. Petersburg. So on June nineteenth, nineteen sixty-five, the ship sailed under the Skyway Bridge and docked at the pier right behind the back door of the Museum of History. A Tahitian village was built that had a gift shop and other activities that tied into the actual filming of the Mutiny on the Bounty. And it quickly became one of our most popular tourist attractions. And it quickly became one of our most popular tourist attractions, a beloved fixture of downtown. When news spread that the ship was going to actually sail out into the bay and into the Gulf of Mexico, which it used to do for excursions, I remember it was a race to the Skyway to see her glide under the bridge occasionally at full sail. A young sailor named Hugh Boyd sailed on the maiden voyage and remained with the ship for decades, becoming her captain, carpenter, painter, and the attraction's general manager. In 1986, Ted Turner acquired the MGM Film Library and the Bounty with it. Now, I don't know if this is true or not, because I haven't been able to confirm this, but I heard a story that Tom James actually had a conversation with Ted Turner to purchase the bounty, and Ted Turner didn't even know he owned it, that it was part of the whole package that went along. But the ship was used for promotion and entertainment, as well as being used in filming of Treasure Island Pirates of the Caribbean, Dead Man's Chest, and Yellowbeard. The bounty would eventually spend summers in New England and then return to the pier as a seasonal attraction in the mid-1990s. Headed home to St. Petersburg from New London, Connecticut in 2012, the bounty encountered Hurricane Sandy. The ship initially filed an easterly course to avoid the storm, but the storm shifted. And on October 29th, the ship's master had reported the bounty was taking on water off the coast of North Carolina's outer banks, and the crew of 16 was prepared to abandon the ship. U.S. Coast Guard reported the ship had sunk, and 14 people had been rescued from life rafts by two helicopters. The storm had washed the captain and two crew overboard. One crew made it to a life raft, but the captain and the other crew member was missing. They wore orange survival suits, complete with strobe lights, thereby giving rescuers some hope of finding them alive. As Chris said, Claudine Christian, one of the two missing crew members was found by the Coast Guard, rushed to a hospital, but did not survive. Search efforts for longtime captain and St. Petersburg resident Robin Walbridge continued, covering an area of 12,000 square miles, until it was suspended on November 1st. October 29th commemorates the end of the bounty's magnificent journey, but we'll always remember that spectacular ship that called St. Pete home. Thank you.
Good morning, council. My name is Claudia McCann, and I am the wife of Captain Robin Walbridge, the late captain.